Good evening and welcome to the Franklin Township Board of Education regular meeting. Today is Thursday, July 25, 2022. John, can you do roll call, please?
Ms. Desai.
Here.
Mr. Grippo.
Here.
Dr. Hopkins.
Here.
Mr. Jackson.
He's on the phone.
Ms. Maris.
Here.
Mr. Shabon.
Ms. Singh.
Here.
Dr. Smith.
Present.
President LaCour.
Here. Okay, thank you. And Sammy let us know that he's going to be out of town and I shouldn't touch this. And Dennis is on the phone.
Dennis is here.
I mean, I'm sorry, Walter is on the phone. We're starting off great. Okay. John, could you read the Open Public Meetings Act, please?
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Public Law 1975, C-231 Sunshine Law, copies of this public meeting notice were sent to The Courier-News, The Home News Tribune, The Star-Ledger, The Franklin Reporter, Tap into Franklin Township, Franklin Township Clerk Manager, District Schools Offices and Associations, PTO President, and posted on the district website.
Thank you. Dennis, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Yes. Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, in the spirit of which it stands, one nation, under God, in the good soul, with liberty, justice for all.
Thank you, Dennis. Bill, would you read the mission statement, please?
Sure. Mission Statement of Franklin Township Public Schools. Franklin Township Public Schools embraces its diversity, forces excellent educational innovation, and empowers all students to achieve their highest potential.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
By Artman, seconded by Walter. Oh, boy, Dennis, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Our agenda is now adopted. And now we're on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. First item, pandemic protocols, 2022-2023. On this evening's agenda, the board is considering the 2022-2023 pandemic protocols to guide the school district. The protocols are well-aligned to the latest guidance recently issued by the federal, state, and local health officials. Earlier today, we uploaded to our website a presentation that we believe does a good job summarizing the protocols. I encourage everyone to take some time to review the presentation prior to the start of the school year. In short, the protocols really do allow the district to return many of its operations to pre-pandemic status while remaining mindful that the pandemic is still with us. Major changes to the protocols include the elimination of contact tracing, quarantining of close contacts, and the minimum social distance requirement. With that said, the district will continue to monitor county, state, and local levels of COVID-19, and will continue to work with local health officials in the event layered protection prevention strategies such as contact tracing or social distancing and/or even masking need to be reinstated. Again, I encourage everyone to review the presentation online, and of course, if there are any questions, feel free to contact your assigned building's administration or my office directly. Start of the 2223 school year. Earlier today, we also posted a welcome letter written by myself to our website. Again, I encourage everyone to take some time in the next few days to review the letter. In the letter, I explain that on Monday, August 29, 2022, which is this coming Monday, we will open the Genesis Parent Portal. The Genesis Parent Portal gives a family access to important information for the new school year, including your child's bus pass, your homeroom assignment, and/or your child's schedule. However, prior to gaining access to these documents, you're going to have to complete a series of other documents, or at least acknowledge a series of forms, that are also uploaded to the parent portal. Students in a little less than two weeks. As always, everyone's hard work is appreciated. So again, day one, September 7, it's just around the corner, next week, and the week after, you'll have some time to fill out forms and retrieve bus passes and all the other good stuff which are sitting online. Things are getting adjusted and cleaned up right now, and will be ready for downloading on Monday.
Thank you. My board president's report is extremely brief. Thank you to everyone who worked hard. People worked extremely hard over the summer. We think that when school closes in June, that school stops, but it doesn't. There's been a lot of hard work in curriculum facilities, as John just mentioned, and the business of running the school still continues. So thank you to everyone who worked so hard over the summer. We appreciate it. And I'm sure I'm speaking for everybody on the board. We're very excited for a safe and healthy and happy and productive school year 2022-23. So that concludes my board president's report. And now we're on to comments from the public. Can I get a motion to open that?
So moved.
Moved by Artman, seconded by Dennis. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Public comments are now open. Five minutes per speaker on agenda items only. If you're calling in, please press star five to unmute yourself.
Seeing no comment, Madam President, I move the close to public session.
Oh, Johnny, do you have anyone? Okay. Motion to close public comment by Bill, seconded by?
Second.
Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Public comment on agenda items is now closed. And now we're on to our committee and liaison reports. Bill, can you please read the safety report?
Okay. The Safety and Security Committee met on Wednesday, April 10 via Zoom. Members were myself, Chair, Nishida Deci, Dennis Hopkins, Lori Maris, alternate, Mr. Wilson, and Dr. Ravalley. The use of metal detection warrants. The committee met and discussed a new policy, Policy Number 7444, Use of Handheld Metal Detectors and the Accompany Regulation. The Policy Committee also met previously and reviewed the same policy and regulation earlier in the week. The board attorney had reviewed the policy and the regulation, which provides additional details on how and when handheld metal detectors will be utilized in schools, on school grounds, and at school-sponsored events. The committee's questions and concerns, as we discussed them, were addressed by administration, and the policy was placed on the agenda for review by the full Board of Education at their August meeting. The regulation will be placed on the board meeting agenda for review and approval at the September meeting. Items for review and discussion. The committee discussed the preparation for the opening of school. Dr. Ravalley and Mr. Wilson informed the committee that the secure vestibules in all of our schools are fully functional now and ready for operation. School safety-related concerns identified in conjunction with school-level safety teams and the Franklin Township Police have all been addressed. The meeting was adjourned at 7:20 PM.
Thank you. Mike, can you do facilities and finance? I don't know if Walter has the report with him.
Sure. I'll do facilities first, and then I'll look for the finance. The Facilities Technology and Transportation Committee met on Tuesday, August 16 of this year at 6:30 PM remotely. Present were President LaCour, myself as chair, Dr. Hopkins, Mr. Jackson, Dr. Ravalley, Mr. Toth, Mr. Banano, Ms. Betchy, Mr. Coretta, Mr. Ellis, Mr. McNamara, and Ms. de Blazi. We discussed some energy things at the Claremont Solar Report. So Mr. Ellis provided the committee with the Claremont Solar Report. As per Mr. Ellis, the system has generated approximately $75,000 in revenue to date. We also talked about a possible dinner program through the food service. Margaret de Blazi advised the committee about barriers to operating an after-hours meal program to all students. Some of the barriers included student eligibility, staffing shortages, supply chain issues, and student participation. We also discussed capital projects, where Mr. Toth advised the committee that all summer renovation projects have been completed, and Mr. McNamara advised the committee that his staff is preparing the buildings for the opening of school and CUSAC facilities review. Our meeting adjourned at 7:50 PM. Give me one second. Finance. The Finance Committee met also on Tuesday, August 16 via remote, starting at 6:00 PM. Present were Mr. Jackson as chair, President LaCour, Dr. Hopkins, myself, Dr. Ravalley, Mr. Toth, Ms. Betchy, Mr. Banano, and Mr. Ellis. We reviewed the bill's list and financials. The committee reviewed the bill's list for the month of August and the board secretary report, transfer report, bank reconciliation, and void check report for the prior month. We discussed contracts. The committee discussed the award of the following contracts. Award of annual contracts to SCESC for out-of-district transportation for, I think this is $3,700,000. You're missing a zero there, John. Award of three-year contract to PMA as a third-party administrator for workers' compensation claims for $216,000. An award to contract a royal disaster recovery for abatement and cleanup work from the FHS pipe break for $87,000. An award, a contract to Classic Floors for the refurbishment of the FHS gym floor for $51,000. We discussed charter payments. The monthly payment was $1,743,971, and the total year-to-date is $4,759,465. Our meeting ended at 6:30 PM. Thanks.
Thank you. Artman, could you do personnel, please?
Sure. The Personnel and Negotiations Committee met on August 17. The meeting began at 6:13 PM. Members present were Walter Jackson, Sammy Shabon, Dr. Hopkins, Nancy LaCour, Dr. Ravalley, Brian Banano, and Jackie Schneider. I, as the chair, was not present for that meeting. The committee reviewed and discussed the following items. Merit pay presentations. Dr. Brenda Sofield, Director of Pupil Personnel Services, Mr. John Toth, Assistant Superintendent for Business, and Dr. Dan Logren, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, presented to the committee the outcomes of their individual merit goals for 212022 school year in accordance with their individual employment contracts and NJAC 6A23A3.1. Personnel report, August 25, 2022, Number Two. Review draft of the personnel report for this board agenda. Appointments include teachers, paraprofessionals, secretary, and interim vice principal. Extracurricular appointments include Franklin High School Clubs and Activities, Home Instruction, Alternate Education Program, Curriculum Revisions. Job descriptions. Special education coach, academic coach, mathematics, literacy revision. Mr. Banano reviewed the creation of the special education coach and new job description, and the academic coach job description revisions. Diversity hiring practices. Mr. Banano reviewed the working document of best practices for hiring a diverse staff prepared by Mr. Plummer, supervisor, equity, and inclusion. Community-based instruction, paraprofessional chaperone. Mr. Banano shared a draft of a job description for a proposed type and position for paraprofessionals. Paraprofessionals approved for this would accompany our transition students to different work sites. Practicum internship affiliation agreement with Caldwell University. Ms. Schneider reviewed affiliation agreement for speech-language specialist internship. And finally, for the good of the order, Dr. Ravalley reviewed the timeline for upcoming principal interviews for Claremont Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori, would you read the curriculum and the policy reports, please?
I don't think I have policy, but I'll read curriculum now.
I have the policy here if you want.
Thank you.
Bill, would you read policy?
Yeah, sure.
Curriculum Instruction Committee meeting occurred Monday, August 15 via Zoom at 6:00 PM. The committee members present were myself, Lori Maris as chair, Ms. Nishida Desai, and Ms. Nancy LaCour, ex officio, Dr. Daniel Logren, and Dr. John Ravalley. Our new business proposals for board consideration included District NJCUSAC Planning Team. The team consists of district stakeholders that will gather evidence supporting a successful New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum, otherwise known as NJCUSAC, review. District Professional Development Plan for 2022-2023. This plan identifies the professional development activities planned for district staff members as well as the data gathered to support the need for these for these professional learning opportunities. District Mentoring Plan 2023-2022-2023. This plan identifies arrangements that have been made to support the successful induction of new district-certified staff members. District Evaluation Onboarding Plan 2022-2023. This plan identifies a process for onboarding teachers and administration who join the district after the annual orientation activities for teachers or evaluation calibration activities for administrators every August. Memorializing the 2022 summer curriculum changes. These changes include updates in New Jersey's nine curriculum content areas identified on tonight's Board of Ed agenda. We also discussed the novel study pilot, which was for secondary English. The purpose of this pilot is to offer a balance in our current reading program between independent reading and book clubs with whole-class novels. The following novels have been identified for the pilot. For sixth grade, New Kid by Jerry Craft. For seventh grade, Three Keys by Kelly Yang. And eighth grade, Pride by Ibi Zoboi. Georgian Court Special Education Study. This master's thesis study will examine special education practices through Georgian Court University, September 2022 through December 2022. We also discussed Jewelry and Metalworking IV Course Proposal. This independent study would be available to students looking to build on their learning experiences from Jewelry and Metalworking 1 through 3. Finally, we also had a couple of discussion items around the District NJCUSAC process. This review process focuses on monitoring and evaluating school districts in five key components that, based on research, have been identified to be key factors in effective school districts. Instruction and program, fiscal management, governance, operations, and personnel. The meeting concluded at approximately 7:15 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill, would you do policy, please?
So the Policy Committee report is similar to the Security and Safety Report that I just read, but I'll read it for the purpose of the minutes. The Policy Committee met. Members Sammy Shabon, the Chair, William Grippo, Lori Maris, Dr. Ravalley, Nancy LaCour, Mary Clark, and Orville Wilson were on this virtual meeting. The committee met and discussed a new policy, Policy 7444, Use of Handheld Metal Detectors and the Accompany Regulation. The Policy Committee had reviewed the policy at last month's meeting and had some questions about its implementation. Since that July committee meeting, the board attorney further refined the policy language, and a regulation was drafted to provide additional details on how and when handheld metal detectors would be utilized in schools, on school grounds, and at school-sponsored events. The committee's questions and concern were addressed, and the final version of the policy was shared with the Safety Committee and Security Committee later in the week. Upon review by that committee, the policy was placed on the agenda for review by the full Board of Education at their August meeting. The regulation will be placed on the board meeting agenda for review and approval at their September meeting, and the meeting was adjourned sometime that evening. So those were the both committee meetings on use of handheld metal detectors. One was the policy meeting, and the second was the security meeting.
Thank you, Bill. And now we're on to, does anyone have any liaison reports? No? Okay, now we're on to new business.
I would like to make a motion to move the following. R1 Monthly Reports, M1 Minutes of Board Meetings, A1 Travel and Related Expense Reimbursement, A2 Affirm Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying Decisions, A3 Facilities Use, A4 District Goals 2022 and 2023. You want me to pull that out? Okay. I will repeat. I would like to make a motion to move the following, R1, M1, A1, A2, A3. A5 Maximum allowable cost of independent educational evaluations for the 2022-2023 school year. A6 Semi-Reimbursement Corrective Action Plan. A7 Acknowledge Revision to Policy Appendix. A8 New Policy First Reading. A9 Updated PEA Budget. A10 Employee Exam. B1 Warrants and Payrolls. B2 Financial Reports. B3 Contract Approvals, A through L. B4 Change Orders, None at This Time. B5 Award of Bid Transportation Student to and From Revision. B6 Award of Competitive Contract for Synchronous World Language Instruction Delivery Service. B7 Award of a Competitive Contract for Youth Development Mentorship Program at the High School and the Middle School. B8 Supply Chain Assistance SCA Funding. C1 Out-of-District Student School Year 2021-2022. C2 Field Trip Destinations, None at This Time. C3 Field Trip Applications, None at This Time. C4 District NJCUSAC Planning Team. C5 District Professional Development Plan 2022-2023. C6 District Mentoring Plan for 2022-2023. C7 District Evaluation Onboarding Plan for 2022-2023. C8 Memorialize Minor Curriculum Changes. C9 Georgian Court Special Education Study. C10 Course Proposals and Revisions. C11 Novel Study Pilot and Textbook Approvals. P1 Approved 2021-2022 Administrator Merit Pay. P2 Revised Job Descriptions. P3 Create Position. P4 New Job Descriptions. And P5 Personnel Report Number Two, dated today, August 25, 2022. So pulling out A4 and making a motion to move everything else.
So the motions for R1, M1, A1 through A3, A5 through A10, B1 through B8, C1 through C11, P1 through P5. Can I get a second?
Second. Second.
Who said that?
Lori.
Seconded by Lori. Any discussion? Dennis?
I'm good.
Nishida? Bill, any discussion?
Nope.
Lori?
No, thank you.
Mike? Walter?
No.
Okay, John, can you roll call, please?
Ms. Desai.
Yes.
Mr. Grippo.
Yes.
Dr. Hopkins.
Yep. Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yeah.
Ms. Maris.
Yes.
Ms. Singh.
Yes.
Dr. Smith.
Yes.
Present report.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to move A4 District Goals 2022 to 23?
So moved.
Moved by Artman, seconded by?
Me.
Nishida? Can we read those before we vote on them? So Dennis, would you read the first one?
Health and safety. Continue to ensure the health and safety of students and staff through policy. Procedures, promotion of wellness programs, and facility upgrades that enhance safety and security measures. Seek out and support those who will benefit most from positive behavior programs and mental health supports, and bolster social, emotional programs to protect and support students, staff, and our community.
Thank you. Nishida, would you read the second?
Yes. Equity. Continue the elimination of systemic racism and lingering white supremacy, and remove access barriers so all students have equal access to rigorous academic programming. Ensure that all races are included in the structure of the district, and any attempt or practice to dominate a race or highlight another unfairly will not be tolerated.
Thank you. Artman, would you do the third?
Staffing. Support current staff through high-quality professional development and opportunity for growth while recruiting and sustaining a diverse, high-quality workforce.
Thank you. Bill, would you do the next one?
Yep. Rigorous Programming. Support policy and programs that address learning gaps, learning recovery, and learning acceleration to assist students in reaching their full learning potential. Identify, engage, and support students who show the need for expanded levels of rigor. Continue the expansion of innovative college and career readiness programs.
Thank you. Lori, would you do the next one?
Yes. Sustainability and Green Initiatives. Support and create policies to reduce waste and lower energy consumption. Foster environmental awareness among staff and students, and encourage the school community to engage in environmentally sound projects, with each school achieving sustainable Jersey certification.
Thank you. And Mike, would you do last?
Sure. Community Engagement. Work to further relationships and incorporate a multitude of strategies to connect with and listen to stakeholders in order to celebrate and proactively promote the school district within the community at large, and to ensure family engagement of students attending the Franklin Township Public Schools.
Thank you. So it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mike?
No, thank you.
Lori?
No, thank you.
Bill? Artman?
Just on the goals, I just want to say that that particular meeting that we had the Board of Ed retreat was one of the most stimulating board meetings we've had, and these goals were really worked over for longer than we expected, and it was worthwhile. And it was good to have the back and forth with the board members and the administration, and to carve out what we think is best for the district.
Thank you. Artman, any discussion?
No, thank you.
Nishida?
Thank you.
Dennis?
Just to echo what Bill said, that just to put the public at ease, that we, as the board members, really took deep dive into these goals and took very deep consideration, along with the superintendent and his staff. And hopefully, we have met the mark for the public, but we did not leave this room without addressing these each individual goal very thoroughly. That's all.
Thank you. Walter, do you have anything?
No, I just want to say, great job, team. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. While I didn't attend physically, I was on the phone remotely, and it was a very robust conversation, and probably one of the longest. very robust conversation, and probably one of the longest goal-setting meetings that I think that we've had in a while. And we also had the opportunity of having Linnea Stevens from Johns Hopkins to do our board training for us on diversity, equity, and inclusion. John, can you do roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Desai?
Yes.
Mr. Grippo?
Yes.
Dr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Maris?
Yes.
Ms. Singh?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
President La Court?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So, these new goals will be at the top of our agenda, and this is what the superintendent will base the district's goals on. So, good job. And now, I would like to congratulate our newest hire, Gail McGee, who is our Vice Principal at Franklin Park School. So, congratulations. And I think maybe your principal wants to come up and say something, and then we'd like to hear your thoughts.
Always ready, President La Court. So, I'm Rebecca Solomon, the proud principal of Franklin Park School, and I'm so excited, so humbled and excited to have Gail McGee join the Franklin Park family, but more excited to have her join the Franklin Township Public School family, because I believe that Gail's future here at Franklin Township is bright, and I'm so excited to bring her to our district. So, without further ado, Ms. Gail McGee, our new Vice Principal.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say thank you for the opportunity. I look forward to working with each and every one to make sure that all of our students reach their highest potential.
Thank you very much. Welcome to the family. When we're done, your family can go up, come up and take pictures, and I think that your daughter has flowers for you. Good move, sweetie. Can I get a motion to open public comment?
So moved.
Moved by Arteman, seconded by?
So second.
Dennis, all in favor?
No.
Opposed? Public comment on any item is now open. If you're on the phone, please press star 5 or come up to the microphone.
Madam President, seeing no one coming forward, I move to close the public session.
Bill, one second. John, did you have anybody?
No.
No?
So second.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Walter?
Dennis.
Dennis, I don't know why I'm like, because I keep wanting to be conscious of the fact that Walter is on the phone, so I apologize, Dennis.
Walter usually sits there.
Yeah, that too. You're messing me up with that. So, public comment is now closed, and now, we're on to board member comments. Mike, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
Why are you quiet? Lori, do you have anything?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Bill, I'm sure you have something?
Just back to the district goals. We did agree that mid-year, we would schedule another in-service for the board where we could review and progress monitor. I remembered that, Rebecca, from my principal days, progress monitoring, progress monitor the goals and how they're doing. So, Madam President, if you could see that that's scheduled for July or February, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you. I will. Nasheeda, do you have anything?
I do. I wanted to also talk about the goals. I have been on the board for five years, and this time, when we worked on the goals, I felt that everybody was very mindful of what the community had wanted, and we had a thorough discussion, and it produced amazing results, and I hope that it is what the community wants, and we, our students gain from it. That's one. Second, welcome back to the students and the teachers. I'm excited for the new school year. I'm crossing my fingers for you and me, as I teach as well, and have a fun school year. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis?
Yes. Next time we stand or sit in front of the public, we will be two, three weeks into the school year. I'm excited. We finished off the class of 2022 in a strong way. They are now off to their future endeavors, college, military, or the job force. And I'm excited. I'm excited for the teachers. I'm excited for the board. I'm excited for the public that we are stepping into the school year 2022-2023, and we go start off running. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I wanted to add on and congratulate Ms. McGee. Welcome to Franklin Park Schools.
Thank you. Walter, do you have anything?
Yeah, real quick, I would like to congratulate Gail McGee. I'm excited about what you're about to do at Franklin Park. Best of luck to you. Please feel free to, at any time, reach out to the board, because we are definitely here to support everything that you do. And to my fellow board members, it's been a great past school year. I'm looking forward to the new and amazing and challenging things we're about to do in the new school year. And to all the Franklin Knights and Warriors out there, get ready, get ready, get ready. We're about to start something absolutely new, fun, and challenging. So, get ready for the new school year, because it will be here very soon. Thank you.
Thank you. And Walter, are you available to decorate any more dorm rooms?
I gotta, I gotta check with the form and Chloe to see.
Thank you, Walter.
Thanks.
There's a lot going on in school, a ton of stuff for parents and kids to get involved in, a lot of school-sponsored organizations. I encourage you to be involved in your child's education. It's important. Be involved in your school. If you can, volunteer wherever possible. There's so many opportunities. Encourage your children to get involved in the many extracurriculars that, there's so many that Franklin offers, it's daunting, but get involved and have a fantastic school year, because this is just going to be a really good one. I'm really proud of the work that we've done. So, with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Can't, because I didn't speak.
Oh, man. Like, you know what? I missed one meeting, and I'm blowing it.
That's okay, President La Court. I just want, I'm just gonna take over. I just want to congratulate Ms. McGee for joining the Franklin family. Franklin Park School is very close to my heart. That's where I started. As a PTO parent, my kids went through Franklin Park School, so you are in, you know, you're in a phenomenal building under the leadership of Ms. Solomon, and I know you guys will do wonders, and I just want to welcome you to the large community, as Ms. Solomon said, to the Franklin schools. Also, wishing all the teachers, the students, the parents in a phenomenal year. Stay safe, get vaccinated if you still are not, get boosted, and come back to a new school year, a healthy school year. Let's go Warriors. Thank you.
Thank you. And I actually forgot to say thank you for running last month's meeting. I really appreciate it. So, now, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by what?
Second.
Okay, moved by Nasheeda, seconded by Arteman. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.